I will open our school committee meeting for July 27th. If we could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start with introduction of members.
Ted Millville.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Carol Larkin, Millville.
Erin Bonaco, Millville.
Denise Carrier, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Thank you so much. And first, we have consent agenda warrants. Just looking for a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Dan and second by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor of consent agenda A, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstained? That's unanimous. All right, and first on our agenda, we have public forum. We are here tonight to talk about the border issues at Millville Elementary School, but I'll open our public forum if there's anyone that wanted to speak with us prior to us opening our discussion. Mike?
See, I stuck around. What's the town's plan going forward?
We are, I actually am going to invite Jennifer.
I just throw this out there, then they can answer it when they want. I just want to make sure that it's going out, that this has been going on since at least 2008, if not before that. So what they need to do is fix the problem. Children in both of these towns shouldn't have to take water into a public school in 2023 from home.
Thank you.
If they're not capable of doing it, I think the district needs to step in, take care of it, and send in the bill.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public forum comments? So what we're going to do actually is, I'm going to ask Jason to update us on the border issue, but I did speak to Jennifer Gill earlier, Chair of the Millville Board of Selectmen. Jennifer, would you mind sitting up here and giving us an update? Since we last met together, May 14th or 15th, I'm losing track of that day, but I've attended a few meetings of the Millville Board of Selectmen. I did not make it to Mondays, but I did watch after. So if you want to bring us up to speed on, you know, we, I think we essentially knew what the plan was when we all left, May 14th, but if you can fill us in in between, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, no, that's great. So I think it's an excellent point that this has been going on since 2008 because it obviously isn't an easy fix because it would have been fixed way before today if it was easy. And I think, so since the last meeting, I guess, I would like to apologize because a lot, not a lot, a lot of progress has been made, and I would say no progress has been made. There's been a lot of documentation going back and forth, and as the Chair of the Board of Selectmen in Millville, I feel accountable for that. And so I'm sorry that Phase Two of the plan has not moved along the way that we had hoped. So our water operator did give notice that his last day will be tomorrow or Monday, perhaps. He gave that notice yesterday. So we're looking to find a new water operator. Dr. Gulick is helping us with that. If people aren't familiar with Dr. Gulick, he was actually recommended to us in 2018 or 2019. It was shortly after Peter Caruso became our town administrator and Congressman McGovern was touring the school. And at that point, as it was, say, it was 2018 issues that were going on for 10 years. And he said, I have a guy who you can work with, and he's very good. And that's how we got Dr. Gulick. So he has a few irons in the fire on finding someone new for us, which I have a lot of confidence in him, and I'm excited that he was able to find some replacements so quickly. On Monday, we met on the, as the Board of Selectmen, and in that email that we read from Mary Jude, and I believe in a subsequent email, she has mentioned that water needs, bottled water needs to be provided by the town. It was discussed, do we need to do that? If Mass DEP tells the town we need to provide water, then we will provide water. The method of that, I don't know if we want to go with bottled water. I imagine there'll be a lot of bottles to recycle, so if there's another method that's maybe a little bit more environmentally friendly, that's not bottled water, I'm open to those suggestions, but if, we will provide water. Oh, I did also let Mary Jude Pigsley know, because in the last discussion we had on July 13th with her, which was shortly after your meeting, she was unhappy with the progress as well. So I let her know I was also unhappy, and I apologized. I was like, I would sell my kidney tomorrow if I could get this application to you. But I did tell her my goal is to get it by August 31st. That's aggressive without a water operator, but I think we need to put in aggressive goals because things have not been moving. And so I think with aggressive goals, we'll get better movement. I did email Peter Caruso, our town attorney, Dr. DeFalco, and Chair Bonaco today as well regarding a path forward on outstanding bills. I think this has also been going on too long. And I know this is probably a point of frustration with everyone, but I do what the attorneys tell me to do. I feel like if I don't do that, I'm putting taxpayers in Millville at risk. So if they say, don't do this, I'm not doing it. But I do think it can't just be like, well, they say we don't pay the bill, and our attorneys say we don't pay the bill, so no one pays the bill. So we need to come to an agreement, and I'm hoping that we have that meeting next week, and then we can talk about it at the Board of Selectmen, August 14th, on how we feel about the outcome, and then also have that wrapped up by the end of August. And then that will be the agreement of water bills going forward, and that's how they'll be handled, and there'll be no questions or ambiguity, et cetera. And then lastly, in the various emails that we've exchanged with Mass DEP, they have made it clear that moving students is not required based on the status of the water. We would provide the bottled water, and children could remain in the school. So I don't know if there's anything else, if anyone has any other questions or concerns? Yes?
So first, I just want to say thank you for coming tonight. I know, I know how upset you are about this as well, and I do appreciate your apology. I just want to point out to everyone here, anyone else that's going to listen, that Jennifer has been very communicative to myself and Dr. DeFalco. If we ask to speak to her, it's within a day. I think that if any of us, myself, Jason, you, I'm sure this committee could do these permits and get this work done ourselves, it would be done by now. And I do hope to see some progress now that you're going to have someone else in that position.
Yes.
And, you know, I think August 31st will probably come to fruition faster than what we thought we would get today. So don't, you know, count yourself short. You've been doing the work. I do think there's, you know, a different issue as far as communicating to the selectmen, you know, from your town, but I appreciate you and, and your communication. So that's keeping us together right now, just so you know. Dan, you had something?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Madam Chair, and we're Millville Board of Selectmen. I just want to clarify, what outstanding bills were you referencing?
So I actually asked Peter for those today. I've seen them, like, over the last few months. I have not looked at them carefully recently to really comment on that. So I think we would need to look at them. They would obviously be shared with the school committee as well, to be like, you know, well, we don't think we pay anything on this because of that. And I'm, I'm committed to being fair, and I'm committed to resolving this, so.
If I may, Madam Chair, the outstanding bills, are they to the district?
We don't have any bills from the water operator, Dan.
No, no, no.
Anything that has been done has been billed to Millville. There are some, from what I understand, and I don't want to misspeak, or, but from watching Board of Selectmen meetings and from attending them, I believe there are some bills that Peter, the town administrator, did not think the town should be responsible for because of our, the way our lease is written. They're under $25,000, and it's something to do with changing some filters, it's something to do with other work. And he has not brought them to his selectmen to authorize, I believe. I'm not saying that for 100%. Maybe he brought them to a meeting I didn't watch. But those bills are due to the water operator. And as part of his submission to Millville, he requested that the balance be brought to zero. And then that was not done. Because, and at their meeting on Monday, it was asked by another selectman, how much is this going to cost? The answer was, I don't really want to talk about that right now. I don't have the number from the town administrator, and that there were other outstanding balances that he would be bringing to them. So it was not brought to the selectmen to even be able to resolve. I don't think any of us know the amount, what they're billed for, and the dates, anything like that.
All right, just, just to clarify, the chairwoman brought up outstanding bills that the Board of Selectmen in Millville, through legal advice, didn't pay. I'm just trying to get clarification. Is that the bulk water that we bought back in February as a school district, or is that between them and their water operator? If it's between the town of Millville and their water operator, I don't care if they pay their bills or not. It's got nothing to do with the school committee. What we need to do is focus on having clean, safe drinking water at our school building. So the issues with Millville and their consultant and their water operator is unfortunately no longer our problem. The superintendent has gone way above and way beyond in the interest of the safety of the students and the faculty, the faculty there. I mean, this is, I don't know if Jesse could, this is what the water looked like in February, February 1st, in, in the Millville School District, in the Millville School Building, and after washing a pan, that's the sediment on the bottom of a, you know, we were trying to address, the superintendent was trying to address this with Millville back in February, to no avail where the school district, I believe, hauled in bulk water for that period of time, which I have the email here, that the town of Millville is refusing to even reimburse the school district. And, you know, if I may, Madam Chair, I'm willing to make a motion for discussion so that we can move this process along, and I'll make a motion that we, we move the kids from the Millville Elementary School to the John F. Kennedy Miloney School Complex.
Okay, I think, Dan, I appreciate your motion, but I think we're going to let Jason give us an update on ourselves.
Well, I can make a motion, I can make a motion for discussion, and then Jason can give us an update.
It's already on our agenda. We don't need a motion for discussion of the agenda.
I'm going to make the motion either way, so I can make it now, or Jason?
I would like to see his presentation first. I mean, we don't know what he's recommending either.
If I may, the water operator just resigned.
Yes.
Okay. So we are at a point, we are further back than we were on May 15th, when we all sat here with the DEP and this and that. That was a crisis mode then.
Yes.
To be hon, at this particular time, as a member of the school committee, my focus is on the clean, safe drinking water for the students of the district. That's where I'm at. So I'm not interested in getting into Millville politics, their water consultant with their, by the way, who, the gentleman who's looking for a new consultant was told by the previous consultant, the water operator, that he's not even licensed to do what the, and, with Northeast Water.
Actually, that's not true. He's, he's not an engineer.
I don't care.
But I, I'm just, we don't need to throw stones.
It's Millville's problem, not the school district's problem.
Okay. I have one question for you, Jennifer.
Yes.
So Mary Jude's letter that said the school doesn't need to close, nobody's saying the building is not, is like, inhitable, right? Do you know, and maybe we, nobody knows this answer, but now that we are not, you're not going to have a water operator, who would be monitoring that water to keep the building open? Because that is what, right? Have you faced that today?
Yeah, so Mary Jude Pigsley, who's our main contact at Mass DEP, is on vacation right now. And so she's been answering some emails back and forth. We did reach out and ask that question, like, can someone resign so abruptly and leave a public water source kind of hanging? And we haven't gotten an answer on that yet.
Any other questions for Jennifer?
Chairwoman, it's a requirement of the DEP to have a, someone to oversee the water operations. So the DEP manages, is the?
And Millville knows very well they're in violation right now, and like you said, it's not us.
But this is another violation in two days.
It's not us. So there's a lot on Jennifer's shoulders right now, and for her to come to us and at least give us this update, again, I appreciate it.
It's an obligation, is what it is.
Are there any other questions for Jennifer before? Okay. So now we're going to move on to Jason's status of, sorry?
I'm going to stay here.
I'll call you back. Thank you for offering. So Jason, you have the status?
Yes, I have it. Good evening.
Sorry.
That's all, I'm sorry. Good evening, everybody. So before we talk about kind of where we are and where we should go, I just want to briefly read into the record an email that was sent to our school community on July 11th. I think that's important. On July 10th, we had this very frank and pointed conversation about the expectations around the work that needed to be done to ensure clean, safe water for Millville Elementary staff and students. On July 11th, as a follow-up to our meeting, I sent out to our school community, I also shared with the town administrator and to Ms. Gill at the same time, and I'm going to read it, actually, so that it's read into the record. But the email states, Dear Millville Elementary Community, as you know, there's been a lot of discussion around water and the water issues at Millville Elementary School, and correct plan of action to address the challenge is ensuring the school has safe and healthy water. At this time, and again, this was at July 11th, at this time, it seems as, seems that we are at a standstill with the steps needed to fix the issues, and progress is not being made. With that stated, during last night's school committee meeting, there was discussion around setting a deadline where all work on the Millville Elementary School water needs to be complete or shortly thereafter in order to open Millville Elementary School for the upcoming school year. It is my expectation that work on the Millville Elementary School water system be complete or, again, very near to completion by Monday, August 14th. If not, if it is not, unfortunately, we will need to move the Millville Elementary School students and staff out of the school building for the 2324 school year. While I assure you, no one wants that to happen, it is imperative that our Millville Elementary School community have safe and healthy water. The school committee has scheduled a meeting on Thursday, July 27th at 7:00 PM in the media center at the high school, of course, we changed that to here, to discuss the progress made by the town of Millville on the school's water system/quality, and to discuss the next steps for the upcoming school year. Please stay tuned for additional information. I wanted to open with that so people understand that what I'm going to share and the recommendation that I have should not be a surprise. In early July, we had this very pointed conversation about the corrective action plan that was in place as of middle of May, when we left our joint meeting with the Boards of Select, Board of Selectmen from Millville and the water operator and our school committee, Mass DEP, and elected officials. We had other elected officials here. Rep Soder was present, I believe, that evening. So where we are now, to date, and we heard some of this from Ms. Gill, she gave an update. I've had multiple conversations with both Ms. Gill, Mr. Peter Caruso, about the email that I just read into record, and our very strong desire not to move the children if we don't have to. And I want to just underscore that. Nobody wants to disrupt the academic, educational experience for our kids, nor do we want to have to have our staff move as well. I've had multiple conversations about that issue, and our desire to not want to do that. As a reminder, we've also moved all summer programming out of Millville this summer, cleared the path. There is no one in that building with the exception of Ms. Stearman and the building principal. Other than that, the building is empty. Just Kathy's in the audience. So that the work could happen. To date, no permits have been filed, no work has been started, nothing has been done. Additionally, the $25,000 that the Millville Board of Selectmen put aside to engage in an engineering study to address the Millville water issue that is outlined in their July, or their June 15th corrective action plan, and was discussed at our joint meeting on May 15th, has also not been acted upon. So no action has been taken on that as well from the leadership end. No work, and again, I want to repeat this, no work has been done on the water system at Millville Elementary since the end of the school year, since the spring, period. While Mass DEP states that students do not need to be moved, they also state that bottled water must be provided. However, in the June 15th corrective action plan, the water consultant, not the operator, the current water consultant, states that bulk water, which is not bottled water, was accepted as a school district strategy in the spring, but the town found it unnecessary. I think that's important. That is written in the corrective action plan that was submitted to Mass DEP. However, at the May 15th meeting, the Director of Mass DEP stated on record, I have gone back and watched it multiple times to make sure I get this correct, that we should not be cooking with that water. We know we're not, we know we're not drinking it, we know that, we've shut that off, but we should not be cooking with it. Because most often, the foods we're cooking are high starch foods, and that water gets absorbed into your rice, your pastas, et cetera. Given their position, theirs being the Millville side, I have no faith that the bottled water issue will be properly managed by their governance nor their town leadership. At a recent meeting, that was this Monday, I believe it was the town administrator that stated, he's not even sure that bottled water should be provided, that, stating that he's not sure the town should even do that, when it was clearly stated from the Director of Mass DEP that the town is obligated to provide bottled water to the school. I have no interest in fighting with anybody over this anymore. Lastly, we are out of compliance with the same water quality issue standards for quarters two and three. We have failed our last two tests, so this is still a problem. The disinfectant byproduct is still in the water. The lack of action by the town's governance and leadership is unacceptable. They have moved with zero urgency on an issue that is as important as the one we're talking about, which is the health of our students and staff in that building. Additionally, the constant pushback from the town around who should be providing clean drinking water, who should be paying what, is unacceptable. It's just not a debate that we should be having, and frankly, it's one that our attorney completely disagrees with. It is an obligation of the town to provide clean drinking water to that school. It is a town-owned, run building. And that's just, that is just her position. The kids have to have clean, safe drinking water, period. I'm not even sure why we're debating this, to be honest. Lastly, yesterday, the town's water operator of almost 20 years terminated his contract, which was discussed earlier. That is setting back the work that we need to do. Dan, I think you said we're back further from the starting line than we were. As a result of all of this, I'm recommending to the school committee this evening that we temporarily move the Millville Elementary School students and staff out of their building to the complex for the school year 2324, but move the central offices into Millville Elementary School for school year 2324, so that we are still occupying the building, but just the adults in a much smaller group that would not have the same interaction with the water that our students and teachers would. This will hopefully give the time to the town to address this issue once and for all. Please know that this is a really difficult recommendation for me to make. On one hand, because I love Millville, I love our elementary school there, I've spent countless hours there, and I know how the community feels about it. It's really important. But nothing, and I want to be really clear about this, nothing is more important than the health and safety of our staff and students, and that just has to come first. It has to come first above hurt feelings, it has to come first above town politics. It's just the most important thing. So we're going to keep it the most important thing. Again, I recommend to the school committee that we make these changes. They're temporary, just for the school year, to give the town time they need to address the issues, and then we can hopefully go back and restructure spring for next year. I do have a small presentation. If we're interested in doing this now or not, it's just a quick overview of what essentially the consolidation would look like. The complex can, in fact, house all of the students. It was built for just over 750 students, and actually, that's exactly what we would have next year with this, with this configuration. But again, it would require central offices moving out of the building to free up all of that classroom space. We would then go into Millville Elementary School. So I can run through this quickly. I don't want to belabor the point, but it is important to note that we do have our movers ready, and we're able to execute a plan that would allow us to move our classrooms, all of our teacher supplies, materials, our central offices, in time to safely start the school year. So essentially, what we've done is we've walked through and laid out the grade levels and who would be in which part of the building. And again, there's a lot of numbers here as far as just classrooms and who's going where. The only reason that I'm, I'm kind of running through this is to just show the school committee and the community, we have a plan for this. I don't want people worried about, you know, do we have enough space? Where is my student, you know, my child going to be? What if they don't have a classroom? Are they going to be on a cart? All of that has already been settled. We are able to safely assign all of our current classrooms to a full classroom space at the complex. So for our parents listening, I don't want them worried about that. Additionally to this, we've assigned all of our office spaces, we have a lot of support staff, so we've been able to look at our BCBAs, our team chairs, our school psychologists, even our main office, and lay out where our main office, where Kathy, where the principal would be. We've discussed the need to, you know, wire some additional office spaces with cameras so that we can keep our state-of-the-art security in place to ensure everybody's safety. We have a plan in place for that already as well. All of our special education spaces, if you have a student with special needs, or you are a parent of an English language learner, we certainly don't want you worried about that either. We have already laid out all of those spaces to ensure that we have people in the correct place, and all of our students have a safe space to learn. Additionally, with our enrichment, we will have to do particularly, you know, library may have to go on a cart for some classes, but those of you that are familiar with the complex, it was initially designed, frankly, as two buildings, so with the same configuration, so going into that model is not problematic for the building itself. We've worked out the lunch schedules so that we have the cafeteria assignments done, we know what time each grade level is eating. And I ask, I share these because I know people are going to ask these, they're wondering about this stuff. And our principals are prepared, should the school committee approve the recommendation, to have these parent meetings with the families over the next few weeks so that nobody has to be concerned about these types of logistics and the questions about that. Arrival and dismissal, we've worked out a solution for that as well, in terms of how our drop-off and pickup will work. We've also had a conversation, a precursor conversation with our bus company. This is not problematic for them at all. So we have a system in place that we can execute to ensure that children can safely arrive and be dismissed from school. So again, I know I ran through that quickly, a lot of it's logistics, but I did it more so, more so as a symbolic piece to show you that our plans are in place, so people don't need to worry about that. And I will pause.
So I just want you to point out, this is very different from our beginning of June meeting when Denise presented to us, we're going, if we were going to close a building, this would be the budget savings. That came up of a December conversation, we're not closing a building.
That's right.
All of our staff, and maybe then some, will be needed and utilized in this.
Correct.
So cafeteria staff, all hands on deck. Custodial, they are going to shift over and take care of what they would have taken care of.
That's correct. And I also want to be clear about, my recommendation is not to close Millville Elementary School. I'm not asking that the school committee take action on that. I'm asking to temporarily move the staff and students for the school year out of that building so that the water issues can be addressed. And then we can come back to that issue as we move forward and as those issues get addressed. But I'm not asking the school committee to close and turn the building back over to the town. That is not the request. That is not the request.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
And I just want to just follow back up, this is why I wanted to get the motion out, because I didn't want it to get too political, but this, by the way, is not Chairwoman Jennifer Gill's fault, okay? This has been going on for many, many years, and she unfortunately is in the awkward position of being the chairman of the Board of Selectmen at this particular time, and I give her credit for having to do the tough job. I know the position, I know the feeling of having to, you know, own up to errors. But the people need to know how hard the district and superintendent has been working to try to resolve this amicably with the town of Millville. And I, you know, the town administrator is not, and Peter Caruso is not going to get off the hook with me too easy. As a, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, a former member as well, and as a member of the Water Sewer Commission in Blackstone, I understand the responsibilities, not only of five years of being on the Regional Agreement Committee as a, just a resident and a member of the Board of Selectmen and understanding the agreement, but also the investment that the taxpayers make in the town of Blackstone to provide, and the water rate payers, okay? So, what people need to know is the water rate payers pay for the operation, almost $2 million a year for clean, safe drinking water in Blackstone. The town of Blackstone sends the bill to the Kennedy Maloney School, the Water Sewer, the Water Sewer Commission sends the bill to the town of Blackstone, not the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District. So, water rate payers in Blackstone like myself, as well as taxpayers in Blackstone like myself, pay to provide clean, safe drinking water to the complex. You made a highlight, Mr. Superintendent, in your, in your report.
Yes.
You said this is important, that the town administrator didn't feel as though the town of Millville had to provide, pay for that bulk water that we had sent, we had called in back in February. Doesn't feel as though he has to pay for water bottles. Water bottles have been going to the Millville Elementary School since you've taken over as superintendent out of the operating budget, which, by the way, is supplemented by the town of Blackstone. So, the town of Blackstone is paying a hell of a lot for water, not only in their district, part of the district, but in Millville's as well. This, it defies common sense. I don't understand how clear the agreement can be regarding these measures. The, a water operation, it's a public water supply, the town of Millville is responsible for maintaining and providing clean, safe drinking water, just like the town of, I don't care if there's 25 people on it or 25,000 people on it, the standards are the same. So, to tell us, to the superintendent, sorry, the, the, the town administrator in Millville, and I've, and I'll share with my Board of Selectmen some of the comments he's made through email to, to the superintendent for, for the, for the school committee to review, it's just absolutely absurd to suggest that the town of Millville doesn't have to main, shouldn't be responsible for paying for that portion of the water system because the water system is in the school building, is insane. It's insane. I, I, I'm sorry, I, you know, bit my tongue on this for a while, but at the end of the day, there is an obligation to provide clean, safe drinking water that we can cook, we can drink, we can wash our hands with the most vulnerable of age groups, from four to eight years old? You know, this is, this is, this is common sense. So, if I may now, Ms. Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to temporarily move the MES students for school year 2324 to the John F. Kennedy A.F. Maloney Complex and move the school administration offices to the Millville Elementary School for the same school year 2324.
So, motion is made by Dan.
A second.
Motion made by Dan, and second by Chuck. Any other discussion or questions for Jason? Jennifer?
If you could just come up here, I don't want anyone not to hear you. So, just because, so one, Mr. Keith, thank you for your statement, I really appreciate that. However, I just, do just want to clarify, because Dr. DeFalco did talk about school water and not providing and things like that, I just want to make it clear that by Mass DEP instruction, we will, we're requested to provide wa- drinking water, clean, safe drinking water to the students at Millville Elementary School, and we will do that. So, if that requires bulk water, bottled water, however we do it, it will be done. So, I just.
Regardless of who's in the building?
Correct.
So, it might be less than if it were 400 students.
Right.
Thank you.
But that, since that was listed as a requirement to keeping students in the building, that will be done. Thank you.
Was it not the Millville consultant, though, that said, I wrote that note down, that bulk water is not necessary?
He doesn't make the decision, the Board of Selectmen do. So, he may have his recommendations.
Has that been voted on at a Board of Selectmen meeting?
So, we voted on it on May 15th, and we discussed it a little bit. I don't anticipate, we haven't voted on it for like, in perpetuity. I don't anticipate issues with that. And then the other point I would just like to make is, the original date was the decision to be made by August 14th. I think if you were to table this vote until August 14th, things might look different.
So, August 14th was, I think.
Is the date that the work needed to be done by?
We needed to, we needed that time to move and prepare.
Yeah.
So, we were saying, if, if it was going to be able to be done by that date, we wouldn't have to have this discussion. I think all of us feel we're not in that. So, it didn't happen by now.
Right.
And now there's no water operator, how is it going to happen before August 14th or the predicted time? We still need the space. I don't want to speak for the whole committee or even just for Jason, but I will say for myself, it, it's hard to, it's hard to do this, but it is necessary. And the reason it has to be done for the whole year, because this will probably be settled by, what, September 30th, October 1st? We can't make, this is their first day of school, kindergarten, first graders, they've never walked into a building before. And the expense it's going to bring us as a district, it doesn't even make sense to say it's a temporary one month, two month, once you have it under control again. We have to make a safe, welcoming spot for them. It's going to take a lot of work, it's going to take longer than August 14th to the first day of school. I think if we make this decision tonight, it can start tomorrow.
Right.
And, and Monday. So, though I hope it's fixed a lot sooner than, you know, hopefully when we're sitting here in January and our, our next budget discussions are being talked about, it's, the kids are in that building. The word temporary is very important here.
Not, you don't mean in the building in January, you mean we're talking about.
No, I'm talking about our budget conversations in January for the following school year.
Yeah.
Would include an ME, an MES, so a 24, 25 school year.
Okay. And then I guess for, just from a cost perspective, if this could be, you know, I mean, if we're looking at getting the parents by August 31st, like, say this was resolved by November 1st, so, and we would be covering the cost of the water, like, what's the expense we're looking at? Doesn't make sense for that expense.
To move.
The bulk water was $15,000.
No, we would be paying that, so that's not an expense to you.
What is our expense?
No, no, I understand that, I was just, I was, I was explaining the, the bulk water piece, because my sense is that's probably going to be the next question, how much is that versus what it's going to cost to move? It's going to be about $35,000 one way.
Okay.
And that's just for the actual moving, moving expenses.
So, you're assuming you're going to solve this problem quickly. You, you need time to solve your problem and develop a track record, so having the whole school year to do so will feel more.
It is kind of official, to be honest, to have the whole year.
Yeah.
For sure. I don't disagree with that.
Because the water, the water statements are still going to continue to come out, and, and that was explained on Monday's meeting, because it's an average and they were super high, it's going to continue for four quarters. So, we're already expecting that. It kind of eases the blow to that, to not have to send that to, to 350 parents.
Yeah.
I mean, you had kids there, I had kids there, getting those are stressful, but I know that I, I had already, 20 years ago, sent my kids with water bottles. So, hopefully even into the fall, we're in a better place as a town of Millville to work towards getting money from that grant to alleviate all these problems for, for the taxpayers, the building, and your board.
Yeah. And I guess lastly, I'm, I'm sorry that the urgency was not felt, but I have been working on this a lot. It's been difficult to move someone's opinion, and that's why we're here today. So, and I know not having the water operator feels like we're backwards, I think that we will feel much better in a month. Much better.
And, and maybe by letting your board know that it's mandated by the state that they provide the bottled water, it won't even be, like, they have to do it.
Yeah.
They have to. It's in.
It's in two emails.
His letter.
Two emails from Mary J. Pixley, I don't, it's, I don't.
What we won't talk about is if it should have been supplied before, because that's never been, it's in writing now. I would appreciate it if Jason has good water to drink when he moves, and everyone else that's open there, because it's necessary. All right, so the motion is on.
If I could just follow up on what Carrie had asked in, in about the, the chairwoman about, oh, so first of all, they don't have a water operator right now, so this.
Well, he technically is still their water operator.
Till tomorrow, but they, they don't have a water operator, so, so this isn't going to get resolved by August 31st. But you stated that the Board of, it's the Board of Selectmen's decision, not the consultants.
Correct.
But our emails would say that they disagree with paying for bulk water, or that's your town administrator or whatever, so I would.
So, if you're talking about the February purchase, that was under advice of council. And I tell Erin and Dr. Falco all the time that you're going to get very mad at me, because if, again, when a lawyer says, "Don't do this," I'm not doing it. I'm not putting 3,000 taxpayers at risk, because that's what I feel like I'm doing if I don't do what he says, because I'm not a lawyer. So, but I think that if that bill, that, you know, reimbursement, I think is now up for discussion, right, based on this email from Mass DEP. So, I mean, I know we have to, it might be late to make it right, but, you know, I want to make it right.
I, I mean, I would suggest that the lawyer review the regional agreement maybe before making suggestions like that, and I would also counter that providing bulk clean water is much lesser of a liability to the taxpayers than having bad drinking water for the, you know, 400, 500 students that ages three to eight.
And that's what we're looking out for right now with our motion on the floor.
Yes, that's why I made the motion.
So, we're going to.
Very aware of that, thank you.
Move with that motion, because we are looking out for the students and staff, and the town of Millville is going to look out for their water operations. So, any other discussion before we vote for the temporary move? Okay? So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Do you know this?
Get to work.
Thank you. Do we want to talk about how we're paying for it, or we're just going to figure that out? I think we should have a brief conversation. Denise is looking like she has it ready to go, so.
If you want to pull it from the E and D.
Jason just said it's going to cost about $35,000 for the move.
One way.
That's, that's one way, and that's, that's just for the, and actually, I put in your packet, Denise did a very good job of working with the movers to get a cost that was a little more reasonable than the first, but in your packet, there is a estimate of about $35,400. And Denise, I don't know if you want to talk about what that includes.
Sure. That includes us to have movers on, over a period of time, and given our ti- this was the timeline to be August 14th, and unfortunately, the timeline of August 14th and negotiating with teachers to get everybody to move their things isn't actually going to give us enough time to get into, to get the schools moved. So, the movers will be bringing the totes in, and we'll be moving in stages. The district offices will be moving out first, so then that space will be able to be prepared for the students' arrivals, and that'll be happening next week, and then we'll be moving out the following week. We'll be starting to move everyone else, which begins the 7th, I believe. And, like I said, stages of moving.
And this allows teachers to take everything.
Yes.
That, so.
So, these are, these are totes.
Tote rental is 150, totes 450 per week. They're not going to be told you can't take.
No, no, what they're going to be doing is, it's going to be in stages, so teachers will have the totes, we'll be moving several classrooms, that'll all get packed up, will be moved over, they'll have to be unpacked in those same totes, which are large apparatuses, will be allowed to be filled by the next group. So, it'll be kind of, it's a, it is very much a moving target, and it's going to require us to juggle a lot of things, but we are prepared to do that, to make it a timely move.
And the teachers are going to pack their own stuff?
That's to be negotiated.
Okay, so we'll need to pay them.
We are going to need to compensate our teachers for their time.
So, it's the $35,000 plus?
Oh, yes, that, that's just the movers.
That's just the moving cost.
I, I will say, though, to that end, I had a meeting earlier with the union president, and while folks are frustrated with this, clearly, they are very thankful and grateful that the decision is being made to ensure the safety of their kids and them, so.
So, they need to pack up, and then they need to set up?
Yes.
But they would normally be setting up.
But it's a different scale.
Yes, I mean, yeah.
They're not negotiating with us, you gotta negotiate that with them.
I, I don't want them to have any, like, this is above and beyond.
Oh, no, of course.
So, just know that whatever we need to compensate them, we're going to have to do, because, and we're going to have to figure it out, I would assume from our E and D.
And I'd also want to mention, I'm super worried about our current, so when I say current, I mean in September, right? The, the kids in September that are first graders, I don't want their parents worried that they're going to do first, kindergarten at MES, that they're going to do first grade at the complex, second grade at MES, third grade at the, we're not going to do that. So, those students that are going to be first graders this year are going to stay at the com- at the complex all the way through. We're not going to be bouncing them back and forth, that's just not good for kids. We had to do that, if you remember, when we built out MES the first time, which we just finished doing last year. So, we're going to hit the reset on that when we move our second grade teachers again, because we moved them last year to MES, now we're moving them back to the complex. My heart goes out to our second grade teachers, truly. So, they're going to stay for two years. So, they're going to stay, the current second grade teachers will stay this year with their second graders, and then they'll stay the following year with this year's first graders when they move up, because we can't ping pong the kids back and forth either. Does that make sense? So.
Do we also need to do any renovations upkeep to the JFK playground?
We talked about that, Scott's over there, yeah, we had that conversation, and so Scott, I know Scott and Denise are talking about what's doable, what's feasible, we're going to have to come back to the school committee with that. You might remember last year, we had like, kind of a big overview, and we kind of put it on, we put that side, the JFK side on ice for, for the time being.
Just to be fair, we talked about JFK complex and Millville Elementary School.
Yes.
And, just so people don't think it's just not JFK.
But the work was done.
Which the work was done.
That's right, 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 but.
From preschool and other playground.
Yeah.
And now it's not.
And now it won't be used.
It won't be used. So, we didn't do the work on the JFK side, because we weren't.
We used the AFM playground.
We moved the kids and we were using the, right, so now.
Is there any way to get that done before August 31st? He's not listening.
I don't think so. And what we have to do is determine the scope of what needs to be done, and I certainly want to speak to you, Denise, if you have ideas on that. The scope that we initially, we looked at, the footprint, the recommendation was to poll on the footprint, you got to take all the p-stone out because of the grade and the rain, it pushes all the p-stone down, it's a ton, it's a big project. And then to replace it with, we were looking at the wood chips to make sure that they're ADA and our students don't have any accessibility issues with that. That's very important to us, all means all. So, we looked at a, a lot of different options with that, but it was, it was extensive and is going to take some time to go back and revisit.
Madam Chair, while we're talking about, I just want a disclaimer here, that we, the district did reach out to the Bebo family, and they thanked us for reaching out to them, and they give the full thumbs up to any renovations that may be done to the playground.
Yeah, we did not want to touch that without talking with them first.
Just a reminder.
We did last summer, yeah.
Do you have any dates set up yet for potential open houses for, for, for these new students, parents, students that are unfamiliar with the, with the school, who want to probably take a little tour, walk around.
Absolutely.
Get comfortable with.
We haven't set the dates yet. We wanted to get logistics ironed out, communication out to families, like initial communication that will go out tomorrow morning, now that it's been passed, and now. Um, and then, uh, Dr. Remka and Ms. Schaefer are going to reach out to families and do that piece. We're also dealing with our staff a, um, a virtual, like, Google Hangout next Tuesday morning, Denise and the, um, the rest of the leadership team, so that, again, if they have questions, that they can ask those, and we'll kind of rinse and repeat, and we'll do that with the parents.
I, um, if I may too, on the playground, so, we just got a, that playground's owned by the town, so we might want to have a conversation with the town as well, uh, before moving too quickly on that.
Okay. Um, Mike, you have a question?
Uh, just a follow-up on the, uh, complex, K, pre-K, grade five, for next year, you said you're going to be at about 750? If you put on this, uh, you're looking at your crystal ball, and you look down the road, do you see any rate increases in 24, 25, 25, 26?
And it-
Would it behoove the district to cut its losses at MES and work through the complex until the next wave of, you know, school building plans are in place?
Well, what we do have is a very extensive, um, architectural plan from DRA, and the buildings that have more capital expenses, um, would be the complex, not MES, so, I don't, I think we're jumping way too far to try to talk about that.
You can drink the water at the complex.
This, we, and we can't move the rug, so we'll talk about that later.
Last one I had.
It said we can't move the carpet. So-
That's right.
We'll talk about it at another build, building capital meeting, but, um, that is why the word temporary was used, there was no, no intention here. Unfortunately, this is going, this is happening while we have a school building project in the future. Um, I don't think any of us have intentions of not using MES.
I just wondered, like, uh, so you don't see any bubble come since-
Not right now, no.
Okay. Um, any other?
Transportation?
Yes, we spoke with, um, Telstones already. Yep. It's actually easier for them, frankly.
Okay, I figured, I figured it would be, but, yeah.
All right, so you have, um, the grant on there?
Yes, um, the next item is, um, a request to accept, uh, a grant for Acceleration Academy. Uh, we wrote this, uh, for this summer, we have students that will be starting school August 14th, um, we have two, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry?
That's all right, I don't know if there's-
I missed a hand.
I don't know.
Can I just have one thing?
Sure.
Sorry. Ryan Chamberlain, Board of Selectmen, Chairman, I just wanted to say thank you, um, for that, obviously, the drinking water was something that the Board of Selectmen of Blackstone had been getting a lot of concerned parents about, um, so I just want to say thank you, and please let us know if there's anything that, uh, we need on the town side with all the different movements, and, um, obviously, it's going to be a change, but I would also like to maybe invite the superintendent, um, to a selectmen's meeting, because I assume a lot of the residents are going to have a lot of questions, um, and we just want to make sure that we saturate with all the changes being made, so anything we can do to help. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks. So, back to the Acceleration Academy grant, um, we authored a grant to the Department of Education for just over $82,000 to start school two weeks early for students, uh, who very much need that additional support. Um, we were pleased to learn that we, uh, received the full amount, uh, which is a pretty significant amount, um, for a, kind of a kickstart to the school year, so I'll need the school committee to accept, um, the Acceleration Grant Award in the amount of $82,130.
Okay, motion made by Tara, is there a second?
Give it to Erin, uh, Erin.
Motion made by Tara, second by Carrie. Any questions or discussion?
That's all grades?
Uh, so, it is all, this is strange, they included all grades, but the, uh, grade who I would argue needs it the most, which is our rising freshman, um, so we have, we're doing it anyway. So, we're just going to say it that way, so.
They didn't include them?
Every grade but them. I, I don't know, but we are, we are including them anyways, just, we're doing it. We'll ask for forgiveness.
Sorry, I asked.
It's okay.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous, thank you.
And just very quickly, um, an update on our Mass School Building Authority work, we had our first, um, school building committee meeting tonight, uh, which I know many of you were at, um, and, uh, very pleased that our school building committee is off and running. Our next meeting is August 10th, right, at 6:00 PM, and it will be at the high school in the library. If anyone, friends or family at home that are tuning in would like to check it out and learn more and ask questions, by all means, it's an open meeting, join us. That's all I have for my report.
Um, thank you very much. Anything for a school committee forum?
I just wanted to, um, bring the community, um, and the board, if you haven't already known, DESI has a new framework coming out, uh, Jason was helpful in explaining a lot of it to me, uh, with the comprehensive physical and sexual education, uh, which is going to expand, um, you know, I urge everybody to go and take a look at it. It is going to, going to expand the, um, education process for those two things, there's some great things on the physical education side, um, so I just urge everyone to take a look at that. Uh, it's out for public comment for another few more weeks, I think, about another five weeks, uh, so for you to, um, add your thoughts in there and get a little educated, because that is going to come down the pipe for us, and we're probably going to be, I'm sure that the curriculum's going to change-
Yep.
And we may, uh, experience, uh, some information, um, from that, so, just wanted to put that out there.
If I may, I didn't, I didn't hear, did you say DES changed physical education?
It's the, yeah, DESI is coming out with a new framework for comprehensive physical and sexual education.
Okay.
But it's part of the P E health curriculum?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I just didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, at the very beginning of it. I thought we were going back.
Honestly, long time coming, they, we've had, our teachers revamped the health side of it, I don't, when, do you know the last-
Last October, it was October 22.
Right, but when's the last time DESI-
1999.
Okay.
So, are we going to be doing pull-ups and climbing the rope again, stuff like?
It's very different.
President's physical fitness.
No ropes.
Yeah. Very different. How about the parachute?
Do you want to mention your syllabus?
Oh, yes, sorry, uh, also, um, there will be a PACABUS, um, event going on from, uh, July 31st through August 5th. Unibank in, um, in conjunction with Telstone and Sun, uh, will be, uh, collecting donations from the community, uh, of all sorts of school necessary items, everything from Lysol wipes to book bags and everything in between. Uh, so, I know, again, Jason was kind enough to share it through the district Facebook site, um, but it will be at the Unibank at Ten Chaney Street, um, in the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza or the Millville Men's Club Plaza, um, so, uh, come on down and drop off some, uh, some stuff.
Can I ask a question? Is that, uh, we had a fantastic parent who saw that, um, and reached out to me and asked, um, his company would like to sponsor the purchase of a lot, of a few of those items, um, so maybe we can talk offline about-
Yep.
Like, the best way to do that.
Sure, yeah, we, we cannot accept cash donations-
Yep.
-being a financial institution, uh, so please don't drop off money.
At a bank?
Well, you could definitely, we're always welcome for deposit accounts, but, um, no, uh, yeah, so that'd be, that'd be great, that's, that's exciting to hear, awesome.
So, it's, so the word's out there.
Yeah, so it's going to be, uh, Monday through Friday during business hours, um, so you can check the, uh, the district website, or the district Facebook site, uh, the Unibank website, um, amongst other social media.
Is there a cutoff date?
Uh, August 5th, but obviously, we'll always accept anything, you know, afterwards.
Any other school committee forum? I, I hate to do this to you, because I meant to ask you about it, but, we moved our August meeting to Monday, August 28th.
Yes.
That would be the start of this school week for you. Would anyone, would, would it be detrimental to anyone if we moved it to a Thursday? Is it detrimental to us if we move it to a Thursday, to, to our normal day? That would be August 31st.
Today is Thursday, right?
My only question is-
What is it?
My only question is, do we have anything for MSBA that we have to vote on?
Alex, come on.
Uh, do we have any deadline, we don't have any other votes coming from MSBA, or-
No. Nope, nothing has to be voted on, no. I just was running through the list of things we had to submit.
Does it work for our calendars, is the question? Is it Thursday? It's our normal night, but, why did we do it on Monday, in case you needed anything before school?
No, I think-
Birthday, I think.
No.
No.
That was in July.
You already wrecked that one.